First week of school, I saw people as I was walking through.
We have a lifeguard?
No, limit your own risk.
Yeah. We have floaties.
We did that at the church for Father Jim with the big new baptismal form. We went and got a sign and put it by it says, "limit your own risk." Father Jim Martin.
I like that guy. I would see him out bombing around on the ice with a heavy little mega propeller right there. That's what he wears.
There's really nothing for the board.
And one day he was coming across the Tomahawk from the
Yeah.
Number three.
It can be after public.
Yeah.
And there's always an ice heap there.
So that's gonna be five three, five one.
You have five ice heaps. I know we're getting one four, but it doesn't matter where it goes.
So I'll need a motion to move.
The policy in the medical So when you kept playing candy
Yeah, put my phone in my pocket, Doc, and I got the ringer on too. I do have the ringer on.
You know, I saw that in I had my previous job here, I was doing lots of stuff all the time. I'm not sure what technically we want to word it.
I should show you what my cousin Todd shot opening weekend. Seven, seven. Just, yeah, just. Just, uh, seven.
We got one nice ten pointer, but we got nothing coming through. Andy's got a skull.
I kind of zoned out when I went into here.
Heidi, that's what my cousin Todd shot.
Beautiful, food plots work.
No, it's, it's, it's the farm, the old farm, it's on his property. It's right, right across the road.
We aren't seeing anything up here.
I've seen a lot of those and farms, that's it.
Yes, we used to have a couple little bucks, but
Big, big white dog.
Yeah.
I don't know, and it's too many, so.
Yeah, we've been told there's a huge wolf pack by us, but we're like, we know that.
Yeah, we got seven.
Yep.
Hi Trevor, how's it going?
Yes.
Peace brother. Peace.
He runs next year.
With the black tip, that's the wolf. We had several of them, one minute after. We got a lot of those, um, we have neighbors that walk through and shoot the coyotes. They said it's hard to tell that they're just
So we have, we have actually some bears.
Yeah, yeah, we get huge wolf packs by us, so I'm glad I'm off the ground. Yeah, the one bear we were laughing. He was always about two legs playing with their deer stands. Mike says, "I think it's the neighbor and a bear customer."
No Lisa? Oh, Lisa Wong, I haven't heard that she's
Who's showing up this man? All, uh, person in the park. Oh, the first one. We're gonna have the, uh, we're gonna change one more. No, I was just showing We have more pictures of wolves and bears than we do of here. Removed. I saw one the other weekend.
Ultimately, we're not caring.
Trail, and then he's moving in like a week before an opener. And when he moved in, it's like ten to fourteen days worth, and then you don't see many deer, and then once he was passing by.
Yeah.
But he went hunting on open day. Didn't see anything, he thought, okay, well, maybe if wolves move down, it's Sunday will be a different deal, gets up Sunday morning, just start getting ready, looks at the oh, in here at two thirty, you got a picture of a wolf going past the stand, so he's packed his stuff.
All right, it's Fava Khan, please stand for the pledge of allegiance, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so very much. Roll call, please.
Mr. Borts. Mr. Schaub. Mrs. Fink here, Mrs. Knoll here, Mrs. Schuman here, Mr. Peterson. Mr. Umlin.
Here.
Mr. Kramer.
Here.
Dr. Gaver.
Here.
Okay, agenda was properly posted?
Yes, it sure was.
Thank you. Uh, any public participation? Seeing none, we're gonna move on. I, due to the introduction of our staff, which is five point one, we are going to need a motion to move five point one to, at, to this point in time of our agenda, so that these people won't have to stay for
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, then next on the agenda is the introduction of new staff members.
All right, so we, sorry, we're late in clocks and our building are not the same in every room. So why it says five o'clock in here, it says ten minutes to in another room. Um, one of the things that we do with our new staff is we go through a new staff onboarding process. Today was one of our first, um, after-school meetings with the team, we're talking about classroom engagement, learning environment, and some of the different pieces that we're trying to go through at Lakeland to get to know who our students are. But in regards to that, we have mentors for most of our staff and most of our new staff here in terms of teaching staff and, and, um, student services staff, and so we're gonna introduce those people. I'm gonna kick it off by introducing Todd Martinson. Todd is, um, our new Spanish teacher, his mentor couldn't be here today, but, uh, just wanna welcome Todd as a new Spanish teacher, he's gonna introduce himself.
Everyone, Todd Martinson, Spanish teacher. Um, grew up in, spending my summers up here in, in Tomahawk, Wisconsin, and I'm happy to be able to call this home now. So, nice to meet everyone.
Welcome.
Well, you're not new. Young looking, but not new.
Thank you. Becky Tyler, um, this is now my twenty-ninth year teaching at Lakeland, teaching math. Um, it's great to be back again, and I am a mentor for, um, Katie Gorrell, and she's our new English teacher.
Hi, I'm Katie Gorrell, let's see. Grew up in Colorado, but I started coming up to Monaca when I was nineteen years old. Went to college in La Crosse, got my masters in, um, Chicago, spent some time in Granada, West Indies, that was pretty cool. Just, um, lived in New Jersey for a while, and I, we've actually been back to Monaca, my family moved back here in twenty twenty, but I was still working remotely, writing curriculum in Jersey City. So I'm super excited to be back, I'm excited to also take on the task with, uh, Stephanie Hartzine, the student council, so, it'll be exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Hi guys, I am Matt Dassel, this is my ninth year teaching here at Lakeland. Um, I am a math teacher, excited to be back again this year, working with a great team. Uh, this is Jacob Merrill, he's one of our new social studies teachers.
Hi everybody, nice to meet you, uh, my name's Jacob Merrill, um, social studies and, uh, women's wrestling. Um, I originally, um, from Medford, grew up, so my whole life in Medford. Went to school at University of Northern Iowa, um, spent a year living in Waikiki, Ecuador, and then teaching in Las Vegas, Nevada, and I just wanted to come home, I'm just glad to be back, glad to be here.
Welcome.
Hi, Mary Wetland, uh, year twenty-six, I think it is for me. I am now having the pleasure to introduce a former student, as well as save, uh, former aide in my class, and now he's our new case manager. So he has run the gauntlet of everything here at Lakeland, super proud of him, this is Keegan Gaver.
Yeah, uh, Keegan, uh, I guess you know me, I worked here for like nine years, and I grew up here, just happy to be here in the new role and continue to help kids, so, sort of thing.
Welcome.
So, Gems Club, I am here to introduce two alumni, not my alumni, but alumni of Lakeland, who are now Native American mentors, um, with us in student services. So first is Lilith.
Who do you everyone, Lilith, um, Lilith Schuman. Well, you know my mom, Lisa Schuman, um, I grew up in Plambo, and then I went to college in Kansas at Haskell AD Nations University, I got my liberal arts and my bachelor's in business administration. I have a three-year-old at home, and she got to watch the stage for both of my degrees with me, and I'm just happy to be here.
Anna Lawson.
Anna, um, I am still completing one, uh, school semester left of my psych degree. Um, and in that journey of doing that, four years ago I was here. I've been to three colleges so far, all over the place, but it's landed me right back here, being a T-bird once again, and I'm excited to work with my community.
Well, welcome.
Hello, I'm Tony Giezy, this is my eighth year teaching English here, eighteenth year overall, I've taught in Stoughton and in Rib Lake, and now here. And this is Taylor Malin, and she's a new science teacher.
Hi, uh, I'm Taylor, I'm from a little town in southeast Texas called Livingston, Texas. You guys are American Idol fans, I'm from the same town as Lacey K. Booth, and from the same place. Uh, no, don't know her at all, though. Um, I gra- I graduated from Western Governors University, which is an online university. I had to transfer there, uh, from Sam Houston State, uh, after I became a junior, because I chose to get married at twenty, and I married a soldier, where we ended up in Washington State. This is now my third state to live in, um, and we just got here in November, so, been through my first winter, luckily it was easy. Kinda scared, not gonna lie. Yeah, and I, I kind of have a little fear of talking to people, so.
All right, from Star School.
Hi, I'm Steph Call, principal at Lakeland Star, and I'm really excited to introduce you to one of our new paras, Lisa Sigmund.
Hi, um, Lisa Sigmund, I was a para at ABW for ten years, and now I'm here. My daughter and I are both new to the LUHS family, 'cause she is a freshman here this year. Um, I grew up in Wausau, and then spent eleven years living in the Fox Valley area, and now my family and I have been up here for ten years, so, welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
Um, a couple other members, Adam Yurkowski, a new social studies teacher, and Jacob Burgonley, who's assistant principal, are both coaching football as well, and they're out of practice right now, and JV football game, so, helping serve our kids outside of the school day, so that's why they're not here tonight, um, in this setting, but, I'm in that spot. Last introduction that I'll give before we shift to the rest of the meeting, it's not a new employee, but it's, uh, a new position of representation, uh, to the board. Olivia Mickle is our president of our student council, and she will be here this year, sharing information on behalf of the student body, so, welcome Olivia.
It's just Macy too.
Oh, sorry, I forgot, and Macy Swinski, our new flight teacher, is coaching volleyball right now, and so she is in the gym with our volleyball girls, and so, um, it's great to have new staff that are supporting many different roles, and all of our staff are taking on lots of those things as we go through.
Thank you very much.
Olivia, welcome. So we're thinking just an introduction tonight, you don't have to have any kind of report, if you don't have one ready, but if you wanna have one ready, and you're ready to go.
I have a few things.
We'll wait till we get there then, okay?
Uh, no more commendations?
Uh, there's two things for, for the correspondence piece, and we'll, I'll get to them more in the DA report, but, um, both Lisa Knoll and Sean Umlin were, uh, recognized for achieving level one for the, uh, school board member recognition program. So I'll talk about that a little bit when it's, uh, the DA report, in terms of the, uh, the celebration and the event as a whole. Congrats to both of you.
Good job guys.
Okay, next is our student board representative report, why don't you just stand up and introduce yourself?
So hi, I'm Olivia Mickle, I'm the student council president this year. I was the junior school rep, rep last year. Um, our junior one this year is Jaden Wetland, she couldn't be here tonight, so, we have a few things. Um, everyone's really been adjusted to the new school year. Um, a lot of students have benefited from the late start in the resource period, so we really think that's a good addition. And then our homecoming theme this year is a night in paradise, and our goal this year is to expand that a lot within the community, so, we're trying to plan a tailgate for that Friday night before the football game, so yeah.
Thank you very much.
What is homecoming?
Eighteen.
Okay.
All right, next is the district administrator's report.
Okay, following up a little bit, um, so the night of the, uh, the recognition for Sean and Lisa, there's also a, uh, it's a fall regional workshop piece that's available prior to, Lisa will be sending out information across the board as to who's interested in going, and there's a, there's an agenda that starts at four o'clock and finishes at eight thirty, with, uh, some work, the registration workshop, the dinner, and then obviously the, the program that will follow near the end of it. So we'll get you that information, it's kind of a, a piggyback of the, the first piece there. And then the second thing is, we've never had to do it this early here, but the, uh, the convention that's in Milwaukee, the, they've, uh, they've adjusted it to, you have to have a, uh, you have to register in order to get hotel rooms. So Lisa will be sending out the information very soon, she's had it ready since yesterday. So that'll be very soon, if you can just, there's gonna be a little survey, and there's a bunch of questions on there, and just a few of them, no more than eight of them, I think was our number, eight or ten, somewhere in there. But I, I think the, the first piece they're talking about, October sixteenth, it'll be, uh, and that's gonna be at the Norwood Pine Supper Club, was the recognition piece with, uh, with both Lisa and Sean, so just kinda backtracking through that. The, uh, the W, the WASB convention, anything that you can do on a quicker side, so that if you're interested in going, the idea is that so no one is left out, that's interested in going.
Do they have the, uh, topic agenda already? Okay, thank you.
So she'll get you everything with that, and just a little follow-up, I just finished last week both the first year superintendent, uh, on Wednesday down in, in Madison, followed by the regular superintendent conference Thursday and Friday, which was, uh, the, all three days are pretty intense, but pretty incredible at the same time.
Did he give you the t-shirt at the end of that, this is fortified?
They did, I think I missed that section.
We'll get you one.
And that's all I have for that.
Okay, uh, next is the seclusion and restraint report.
Okay, so as we go through this, if anyone has any questions, it's in your packet, you can certainly s- see amongst, there's only, uh, it's a very small number of, uh, the instances where there was a mechanical restraint, so I won't insult anybody by reading this verbatim or anything like that, but there was one restraint and one seclusion. From the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and it was one student with a disability.
Okay, and then you talked about the WASB convention. Uh, then next is the board committee and board liaison reports. So you've kind of talked about six one.
Yep, so I'll talk a little bit about, we talked a little bit about going to six one of, of different things that way. I was jumping the gun, I was ready for six point two, for all the meetings we've gone to. But obviously, the, the six one piece, if anyone's interested in going, uh, the, the representation piece is wonderful, but certainly if it fits someone's schedule and you're available to all these different opportunities that present themselves. Everyone's welcome to join us, and I'm, I'm certainly looking forward to the sixteenth as well, it's a ni- it's a nice night.
Okay, then next are charter school meetings, uh, you see the LAC autism notes that, from the meeting on September tenth. Uh, it was a very short meeting, but ultimately, I guess, the thing that was gathered from there was that, not only at the very early levels, but in beyond, there are getting to become greater needs of services for those with, uh, mental challenges, so, uh, and intellectual challenges. So, uh, anything you wanna share from the governance council meeting that you were at?
I would say that the, uh, and, and obviously, we have a few people over there, probably the biggest thing, the presentation from Shepherd's College, that was presented that night, was a, a direct correlation to the kids with, uh, with certain needs and, um, there's, it's, obviously there's services provided, it's, uh, it allows for a transition, and nothing has to start at an early age. It can be after the, the completion of the high school piece, as well as the transition center, as well. But I, and when you look at it, there's, there's people there from thirty-eight different states, nine countries that go there. It's a, uh, it's a, it's a magnificent thing that I think all of us that were in attendance had they learned a lot more about, uh, which was, was pretty neat. Uh, we also learned the, the public forum piece in the, in the, the Back of the Woods Bakery that goes on, is a little, little explanation as to what goes on there, and how the kids are, you know, in some instances baking from scratch. And, uh, it's, uh, it was a pretty, it, it was a pretty impressive evening from that standpoint, from those topics that took place. From our standpoint, I, I was tasked with communicating this, to reach out to the superintendents, to both Rhineberger and Tomahawk, to see their initial interests for a consortium, and, uh, and neither one knew a lot about it, but both were open-minded. The next steps there, you can see, it's, uh, um, Jen Savell will be involved, and Steph will be involved, and to have them look at some tours, or, or at least whatever next steps may be, and the, and obviously the very preliminary stages of things.
One question? In the minutes, it talked about, uh, approving a contribution of forty-one, I'm sorry, four hundred and ten thousand dollars, but it references the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, is that a typo?
That's, no, that's what it is, so.
So they're backfeeding what's already been done?
They're writing the checkout now, and it wasn't done in spring.
Okay.
We, um, and that's a, that's a great point with that, so, we, we've met, been meeting with, uh, Eric and I, and, and Scott, we've kind of gone through the, all those different pieces and requested it, I met the, I met, um, the various people from the, um, Howard Young Foundation as well, after the autism meeting. I think each day there's been an opportunity to continue to meet more people in the community that are involved in some of these agencies. So this is exa- that's exactly what it's for, that dollar amount is, uh, and that will be coming very soon, and that is correctly for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Do we have any budget from them concerning contributions to this school year?
I'm working with them on that, just because, um, I guess with my first time around and having to clean up the end of the year star, um, it was my understanding that typically the Howard Young Foundation would make a three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollar, uh, donation at the end of each school year, and this year, um, they asked for, um, some other salaries and whatnot, and so I provided that. And that's how they came up with that four hundred and ten thousand dollar donation. Um, so no, I think, um, uh, Steph and Jen and I did meet, um, after learning a little bit how STAR has cleaned up, and I think there might be some collaboration bases moving forward, and how we wanna go about doing that. I, I don't know, um, specifically what their donation is, is meant for, or if it's meant to backfill some of the costs associated with STAR, so we just need to kind of figure that out.
Okay.
Figure that out for the four hundred and ten thousand?
Yes.
Figure that out for this coming year.
Going into fiscal year twenty-six, so for twenty-five, twenty-six, yes.
Okay. Next is the policy committee, Heidi.
We, um, had guests, Doc joined us, and Dean joined us, um, very productive meeting, we got a lot of discussion, um, understood, um, Lisa was helpful in explaining some stuff, and we've brought, you'll see, that, uh, we're bringing back some of the policies for approval, and I know there was a conversation regarding weighted grades, and the only part where the weighted grades are gonna be involved is regarding the scholarship. So we've changed a bunch of the wording, made sure policies all agree, and we're good to go.
Okay, then I need a motion to approve the following policies for the, as P, policy zero one hundred, policy zero one six six point one, policy fourteen sixty-one, thirty-one twenty point oh four, thirty-one twenty point oh eight, thirty-four thirty-one, forty-one twenty-four, forty-one forty, forty-four thirty-one, policy fifty-one twelve, policy fifty-three ten oh one, fifty-four sixty-four, fifty-five oh five, fifty-five thirty, seventy-four forty point oh three, seventy-four fifty, seventy-four fifty-five, seventy-four sixty, seventy-five thirty point oh two, eighty-one twenty, policy eighty-four twenty, eighty-five hundred, eighty-five ten, eighty-five thirty-one, eighty-five forty, eighty-five fifty, and ninety-one fifty-one.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Then we need a motion to approve the technical changes and miscellaneous policies, fifty-four twenty-one, fifty-four thirty, fifty-four fifty-one, and fifty-four point oh one.
This one, just to review, no action.
Okay, okay, but, uh, the miscellaneous policies?
Okay.
All right, need a motion to approve miscellaneous policies fifty-four twenty-one, fifty-four thirty, and fifty-four fifty-one point oh one.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Uh, next is the consent agenda items. Uh, one thing we have to do is remove, uh, under seven point two, the hire of a part-time hall monitor, there is none. Then we will have to pull number five, the hire of girls' basketball assistant coach, and we'll quote on that after the consent agenda item. Anything else? Oh, there are changes, uh, for the overnight trips. The science Olympiad tournament at Unity High School, on November fourteenth through November fifteenth has been canceled, so that is off. And the science Olympiad lock-in team bonding at Lakeland Union High School has been moved from eleven seven to eleven eight to November twenty-first to November twenty-second. Anything else?
Okay, so we're only, we're, yeah, never mind. I'll make a motion.
Okay, Lisa made a motion to approve the consent agenda items. Dean made a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Borts.
Aye.
Mr. Schaub.
Yes.
Mrs. Fink.
Yes.
Mrs. Knoll.
Yes.
Mrs. Schuman.
Yes.
Mr. Umlin.
Yes.
Mr. Kramer.
Yes.
Dr. Gaver.
Yes.
Okay, next I will need a motion to approve Willis Schuman as a girls' basketball assistant coach.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Schaub. Mrs. Fink.
Yes.
Mrs. Knoll.
Yes.
Mrs. Schuman. Mr. Umlin.
Yes.
Mr. Kramer.
Yes.
Dr. Gaver.
Yes.
Mr. Borts.
Yes, aye. I was paying attention, I was reading next, sorry. Sean, what I was, what I was wondering, is could we just take a minute, or do you, do we thank the Howard Young Foundation for the, uh, donation for the
We, we already accepted those, uh, well, I was thinking the letters, no, the, if, if you wanna talk about that donation that we received.
Certainly, anybody can, can chime in, so there's a, uh, a commercial stove that's being built right now, and Howard Young Foundation is going to, to pay for it, so as soon as it's built, and it gets over there, we'll write a, a check and, and pay So, as soon as it's built and it gets over there, we'll write a check and pay the amount and we've been in contact with the Howard Young Foundation and they'll turn right around and they'll be writing a check to cover that amount. And so, that's a commercial stove and that's going to be at the transition center.
Very good, thank you. Okay. Next is, I need a motion to do a policy committee assignment change from Sean Umland to Mr. Tom Gabert.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Did Tom vote in favor?
I said sure.
I thought he was going to be the one to vote.
What was the agreement? I suppose if I have to.
Thank you. Not that I didn't like policy. I, I enjoyed the four hours of reviewing all the policies for our last meeting. But hopefully, we can start getting busier on the facilities committee and where I will be spending some time with Dean and Ed. So, thank you very much. Okay, next is to review and approve the treasurer's report, monthly financials.
We're going to give a verbal report again and Jamie probably shared with you that the October call meeting will be a lot of financials. So, you will have a preliminary budget and you'll be able to see bank recs. Last week, I did hear back from the auditor to just reconcile June with the three hundred and eighteen dollar variance. So, I did that, so I can move forward now. If they're able to find it, they'll fix it. Otherwise, we'll write it off. I just, I've never had, I know it's, it's small, but I, I wasn't sure how that would affect Skyward moving forward. So, we are good to move on. The third Friday count was last week on Friday, which you know ties into our revenue limit worksheet. It's not finalized yet. We still have a couple of weeks and it's Lisa and Joanne who work on that third Friday count and calculating the membership. So, that will definitely help me start to budget off of the revenue limit worksheet to be more exact.
Where is the column?
Right now, it's sitting at seven-ten, right? But we're expecting that to go down. Last year, your count was six ninety-three. So, based off of student schedules, like Lisa shared with me today, we expect that probably to go down to about six ninety-ish. Yeah. Okay. So, I do expect that we will probably have a declining enrollment exemption again for the school district, so that's another couple hundred thousand dollars. I think it was about two hundred thousand dollars last year on the revenue limit. So, it will probably look pretty similar. The last meeting, I was asked about the credit card transactions and if the board can start to see what fund that they're coming from and I'm working on a process in order to share that with you. I don't believe it's something that I can easily pull out of Skyward. But my practice with credit cards in school districts in the past have been for those users to record their transactions amounts and what accounts each transaction should be charged to on a Google spreadsheet. So, that may help you looking at those credit card issues and the whole process and our admin team this morning did come up. So, we're contemplating how we want to move forward with the whole credit card process in general. Title six is back on track. And administratively, we're working on the annual progress report for last school year, twenty-four, twenty-five. It's due October ten. And so, I'm feeling very good about having that back on track for, it's a federal government grant. And in the HR world, I'll be attending my first consortium meeting for health insurance this week on Wednesday at North Lakeland. So, I'll be interested to hear about it. I've worked with M three previously in a consortium, so I suspect it will be very similar to what I'm accustomed to. But I'm not sure when we'll be going out to RFP again for health insurance, if it's a yearly thing or if we are in a three-year contract with security health plan. So, I will be learning all about that.
At our call meeting, will we be able to see our current fund account balance?
Unaudited, I hope, yes. Auditors are still working and asking me for information. So, once the audit is complete, I will have better information for you, but I should have a general, a general amount.
Very good. Any questions for Eric? All right. I need a motion to approve the checks and procurement card transactions from July first, twenty-twenty-five to July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yes.
How are we supposed to approve that without, with only a verbal comment that exists?
We had to do that the last couple of meetings because we haven't gotten what we typically have gotten before and that's just because you don't have the records or?
What I, what we can do at Cow is approve them. I, I, you're, you're right. There's, there is nothing attached. So, I'm just wondering if you can wait until October and I'll have it at that point?
Or otherwise, I mean, we approved it last month.
I think, I, I'm not sure that there was anything, I think it was just a verbal with nothing attached last month.
Right.
In July, I only had the, the credit cards and credit card transactions.
Because the last financial reports we've seen were dated February of twenty-eight, you know, February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five. We've seen nothing since then.
I think she did have just the credit card.
But I mean, we have not seen anything. So, I think that's why we're just concerned not having anything.
I can understand that.
Middle of October will be a big day for everybody.
Okay.
So, are you comfortable moving forward with, with the vote then? All right, roll, roll call. Go ahead.
Mrs. Fink.
Yes.
Mrs. Knoll.
No.
Mrs. Schuman.
Yes.
Mr. Umland.
Yes.
Mr. Kramer.
Yes.
Dr. Gabert.
Yes.
Mr. Borts.
Hi.
Mr. Schab.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next is to review and approve.
Question?
Go ahead.
I'm not familiar with the committee of the whole structure for next month. And I'm just wondering, we should, typically, when we've done committee of the whole, we've sort of labeled it as no action's going to be taken.
Correct, unless it was an emergency.
But quite clearly, we're anticipating action items at the committee of the whole.
We can plan that to be a special meeting.
Yes.
We'll need to, we'll need to approve the.
I talked to Jamie about it.
We'll need to approve the preliminary budget.
That's my point. I just want to make sure that we list it and get all of our.
We'll list it accordingly with it as a special meeting.
I mean, I don't know that we need the full agenda planner that you guys have been using, which I, I think has worked very well for us. But I think if, we should be very clear that it's going to be an action, actionable item, you know? Okay, thank you.
Just normally, I don't do this, but I would just to go off of what Dr. Gabert was saying. When I was looking at the statutes, it seems as if the prior action, and I haven't told you guys about this, I apologize, but the prior action you've taken at the committee of the whole meetings, I believe would actually technically be a recommendation to yourselves, is what I'm thinking. That's how I understood the statute. So, the technically, if you really were to get nitty, picky about it, the actions that you guys taken at those committee of the whole meetings are just like, in essence, recommendations to yourself, the board. Because that's technically a committee.
But we haven't really, we don't do motions there.
You did do a motion at.
When did we do a motion?
It was either two committee of the whole meetings ago. You guys did approve some things.
But we closed the committee of the whole and you had a separate agenda for board meeting. There were two agendas that night.
There was a special.
It was committee of the whole.
Maybe I didn't see that.
And there was a special meeting called because we knew that.
Right.
But the committee of the whole is no discussion, no motions at all. It's just.
Well, I don't know if it would be legal or anything. I'm just saying technically, if you were to take action as a committee of the whole, I mean, you guys aren't a committee at that point.
Right.
So, you really are just taking action as a committee, not a board.
Right. And all we do is ask for it to be brought to the board meeting. But normally, the committee of the whole is for us, like with the budget coming up that night, is just open discussion to be able to ask anything and the public's able to talk to us too. So, there is no, normally, no votes on employment and every budget.
And I guess bottom line is, if the board would want to take official board action, it would have to be a board meeting agenda.
Right.
And then it's not a committee meeting.
Right, right, it's a special session meeting.
There should be two meetings in one night, committee of the whole and then a special meeting.
Right. And as long as it's posted properly.
Yep.
You guys are kosher, but.
Yeah.
Like I said, I don't know, maybe I missed, like you said, maybe there was two agendas and I just missed the, the other one.
Yeah, because we purposely did two agendas.
Got it.
It's okay, Trevor. At least we know you're paying attention.
Yeah, thank you very much. We want to make sure we do it right.
If I can also request getting the budget information in a timely fashion, like early enough that we can review it, not just that night for approval.
I can send it as I get it, like with the July being correct.
Even if it comes in pieces.
Yep, I'll do that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Then next is to review and approve the purchase of a school van.
Down by the river.
Nathan?
I think I'll start and at some point, Erica or Jen might jump in. Janine Pfeiffer put a, earned a grant, put in for a grant. It's going to be a van that's coming there. You can see on the handout, there's three different financials that are made available from three different companies and it's, it'll be for the kids at the Wings Program is where it's going to come from. I believe in the past, we've also had this identical grant. Erica and Jen, anything else you'd like to add?
I think just proud of Janine for getting this grant. Again, I think it's very important that we recognize her applying for it. We have decided that named Vanzilla will still stay in our fleet, but looking for something that's more economical than what the last grant had brought us.
Yep. The reason it's going to stay is because I learned that the previous van was purchased with special ed funds as well. And there's a process for selling anything that is purchased with sped funds. So, we'll just hang on to it for the time being.
How many people does it seat?
The new one or the old one?
The old one.
The old one.
I mean, is it something that can go for field trips or?
It cannot.
Because it's special ed.
So, it was bought under this grant, but this grant is specifically for transition of eighteen to twenty-one year olds.
Oh, okay.
So, it has to be for special education students or we could forfeit some of our past.
Okay.
Thank you very much and then make, make sure that we get some positive publicity on this. Yes, Heidi?
And can we somehow, on behalf of the board, thank Janine? I mean, like you said, just somehow recognize and the board appreciates what she did.
So, I will need a motion to approve the purchase of a school van for the twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five Chrysler Pacifica from Don Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram out of Rhineleger in the amount of forty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Roll call, please, when you're ready.
Mrs. Schuman.
Yes.
Mr. Umland.
Yes.
Mr. Kramer.
Yes.
Dr. Gabert.
Yes.
Mr. Borts.
Hi.
Mr. Schab.
Yes.
Mrs. Fink.
Yes.
Mrs. Knoll.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Nicely done. Next is to review and approve the lease agreement at Howard Young Medical Center and the STAR Transition Center. Jamie?
Sure. So, everyone has in their packet. I originally sent it a while back, just so you'd have it. In terms of having an opportunity to look at it, read at it, read it, to be able to have some discussion and or dialogue, it's, it's backdated. The, we, it was originally supposed to be set to begin on May first. Obviously, things are going well. It's a really, it's a very successful program and, you know, it's certainly a board decision. I would say that since we've, we're now in, you know, through September, that the, the agreement is working out well and certainly something that administratively, we would recommend and support.
Yes, Lisa?
It's the same discussion as last board meeting. Why is the term not concurrent with the term of the contract that LUHS has with STAR already?
The, the, this is for the transition center. As it's, the transition center for the lease of the facility. And so, our, our contract will be up, is, is up at a different time. You're right about that.
It just seems silly to me. Have we checked with the attorney? I worked in the legal field in the past. There's nobody who's going to enter into a contract when our term of the other contract is not the same as this. This is from, to two thousand thirty-two. Why would we not just begin it on May first, two thousand twenty-five and ended that term on whatever our end term date is right now with STAR and then do another contract for the next term?
Certainly a board prerogative.
That would be my suggestion legally. I don't, I mean, I don't know if we've checked with our legal counsel. It seems like a silly question to even ask legal counsel and waste money on. It's a no-brainer to make this concurrent with our current contract with STAR.
Did you, when STAR originated, I'm wondering, did you have to have the contract with STAR to begin the services, then find the building to be able to make it happen? Because that wasn't originally, and I don't know, Dr. Gabert, if that was from your time?
No, it, it was gone.
Okay.
I mean, all I'm requesting is that it shall terminate on whatever our termination date currently is with STAR. And then we can, I mean, clearly, Howard Young and all of this is working well together. I can't see how we wouldn't be able to do another contract that is the same term as our contract once we renew with STAR.
Yes, Heidi?
The transition center is the one where Dr. Radig was, which just recently opened in that area in the last couple of years, correct?
Correct.
Where this, this has nothing to do with STAR here.
STAR on our premises?
Right.
Correct.
So, I mean, I.
It does have to do with our STAR contract under LUHS.
Pardon me?
It does have to do with our STAR contract under LUHS.
Yes, Dean?
I call a question. Let's vote.
Okay. I, I have a quick question, if you don't mind, Dean.
Okay.
The, the rent. The rent is ten thousand seventy-five. Does that include the utilities and the taxes that I saw in the agreement? Because it says as a fixed fee. And then in the agreement, it says that we have to pay utilities and taxes. So, I don't know if you have seen anything in, in past payment on that, Erica?
No, I don't believe, I don't believe we were privy to anything in the past with this.
Because I'm just thinking, well, now, so it could be more than, than just the ten thousand seventy-five. There could be, you know, because it said real estate taxes. But there, there are exams, I, I think so. I don't think there will be any of those. But I mean, the utilities could be significant.
And it says.
Are you including that? Are you talking about the additional rent portion here?
No, I.
Because that says ten, it should be additional rent in the amount of ten thousand seventy-five, not the regular rent, the rent, regular rent is paid for.
Yeah, it's, it's a fixed fee in the amount of, so I'm just wondering if the fixed fee includes utilities and the taxes that are listed later on in the agreement. Number thirteen and then number eleven. Maybe that's some, some information you can get to us.
Sure. Absolutely.
Okay, then I need a motion to approve the lease between Howard Young Medical Center and Lakeland Union High School, STAR Academy Transition Center beginning May first of twenty-twenty-five.
So, you want to approve that without the information that you just requested from him?
Yes, I mean, that's, that's the motion that's requested here. If we don't get a second, then we are first or second. And if we don't get a second, then we, or first or second, then we.
I'll, I'll make motion.
Second.
I'll second it just. So the discussion then, I mean, technically, we're holding off on this, because it should have been done back in May.
It, it has to go back to May first because that's when the last one ran out. But we, we do not have to vote for it until we get the information.
But we've had this contract before with the same wording, correct?
That I don't know.
I don't know either in the past either.
So this could be a brand-new lease.
To some extent, I anticipate it will be updated with the, the dollar amount. Yes.
And so the building that we have over there, we've had a lease previously? Okay.
He's saying he doesn't know.
I'm not aware of it. I don't, I don't have, I'm not privy to it.
Jen is saying that we had a lease.
Lisa, do we have a previous lease on this? No, we don't. I mean, we've had to have something.
There'll probably be a past agreement of some sort, maybe.
Correct.
Because I guess that's the, the question, is we don't have anything to compare to. I was thinking this was just renewing and.
And we have questions on the subletting, which goes to two thousand ten, to twenty, was it thirty-two?
Thirty-two.
Which is a ways, and we haven't even approved our contract through LUHS. And it's an additional, it's, they pay the base rent, but we pay ten thousand dollars a year. So if something were to happen, we are stuck with that ten thousand plus taxes possibly, plus any subletting and utilities. So again, that's my concern. Make sure that we've got it only through our current term and then move on. But we have a call to, call to questions.
Well, we have a first and a second, so then we can.
It's discussion, right. Yes.
I, I want to just get a little bit of clarification. What age are the students at the Transition Center?
Eighteen to twenty-one year old.
If we did not have a Star Academy, we would still have responsibility for some type of transition for those students. Is that correct?
Correct.
Previous to having the Star Academy, we were transitioning those students in this building.
Or at Wings.
Or, where, where was Wings?
Wings is currently run out of Kids Closet.
Okay.
So that is also a tran, we have two transition programs.
Can you give me an idea of how many students are in each one?
Star has, I believe it's four or five this year, and Wings is at two.
Okay, thank you.
So is this something we can get more information on? And, I mean, is there any, any issue in delaying the vote by a month?
I don't, I don't, no, I mean, we're, I don't know if a month makes a difference. We, at some point, we have to have an honoring of a contractor and agreement, just for good faith.
I don't find any monthly payments from previous years made for a lease agreement. It's all billing for like OT, PT, SLB.
So we haven't been charged on it?
I'm not finding anything. And that's just within the, the last two minutes.
And is that something that we can talk to Howard Young about?
Sure, we can certainly ask him for clarification, especially numbers eleven through thirteen. If that's the request of, of the board to, to have it match up on the, you know, it's, it's a total separate piece in some ways, but, but attached in others.
And true, eleven, thirteen, and two.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, we can do anything, whatever the board decides.
Yeah, it would be just, just giving information on utilities, taxes, and the term.
And to compare it with what we had before, if we had.
We, I don't, I don't think we had anything before.
Okay.
Yes.
I, I, this gets tricky because you don't want to, in, you, I think we all want this to have the opportunity to continue to go forward.
Yes.
And I don't think anyone should take this as we're saying we're opposed to.
Right.
Star or anything else. I'm wondering, Jamie, when you meet with them, if they would be agreeable to two contracts. One matching, one similar to this, which the questions of the finance and the utilities, but aligning with the present contract. And a second contract from whatever that would be, twenty, twenty-twenty-seven to twenty-thirty-two, which would be the next five-year contract, with the provision that a second five-year contract that the Star Academy goes through.
It has an option three, option to extend, which includes that additional term of five years upon the same terms and conditions of this lease.
Right, but in this case, we're saying, but I think, Lisa, I'm trying to get to your point specifically, which is I think you would be more comfortable with rather than having that extension clause within this contract, you would be more comfortable with two contracts. One dated to the commit, we are already in with Star. We've already redid, our students are already there, and I think we have to do something if we're, within the timeframe between now and twenty-twenty-seven. But I think in honoring Howard's Young offer to allow us to continue to use this facility, we should say, yeah, we're, we're open to twenty-twenty-seven to twenty-thirty-two. Just, we don't have a contract to put a program in there yet, so please understand, we're just a little bit uneasy renting a shell for five years if we don't have the program to, if we can't figure out a way to put the program in it. Am I understanding your concern correctly?
Yeah, I'm just not sure. I mean, I, I honestly don't think it needs two contracts because of number three, the option to extend, but.
Oh, you see, you just think this one is twenty-twenty-seven, the no second contract. I understand.
Right, because you, if you go to twenty-twenty-seven and then you go to option three, where it's option to extend an extra five years, it would go to two thousand thirty-two. And, and we have ninety days to risk that. We should have our contract together with Star within ninety days of this term. So I don't see why you would need two contracts.
I agree. Either, either clarification either way, Jamie, I'd be happy with.
Can I ask a question, please?
Yes.
Jen, these are two different facilities.
Yes, Star has three facilities.
Star has their contract. We are only dealing with Transition Center for this contract. This really has nothing to do with the contract for Star.
For the basement of the hospital, you're speaking?
I mean, this contract is just, I mean, it's not for the Star Academy. It's only for the Star Academy Transition Center.
Correct. And to give some reference to it, I, I don't know how many of you have been to the Transition Center? Have any of you? I, I would encourage you to go there. There is a full apartment. There are four students. There are multiple classrooms. It's the thought I said to Erica, ten thousand a month? Like, it is an entire floor that is, is state-of-the-art. And, correct. And so I was definitely shocked because I know, you know, what we're paying for Wings and looking at Kids Closet. Yeah, I, I appreciate what you said, Dr. Gabor, about not offending anyone, because this is a wonderful thing that is servicing many students of our district.
You just made the comment, and I want to clarify, ten thousand a month, this is annually.
Correct.
This is ten thousand for the full year?
Correct.
Okay.
But definitely, like, you, if you saw what we were paying for, that doesn't seem.
No.
We should be.
Yes.
Maybe.
Yeah, I mean, it's a steal, is what it is. But I just, utilities could be two thousand a month. You know, and so.
I think that clarification is good.
Yeah.
And maybe it was in a different agreement before that none of us are aware of, so I think that clarification is something to get, yes.
You know, and then real estate taxes for the square footage that is there could be significant. So I, that, that's why when it said fixed, ten thousand, did it include those two things? So, but yes, I mean, ten thousand seventy-five a year is definitely a steal. Okay, so can we bring that back then with those answers?
Sure.
Jamie?
We have to vote because we have a first and a second.
But can, can we resend the motions?
Well, yeah, you could.
Just vote it down.
Yeah. Somebody make a motion to, I guess I'd have to withdraw.
You have to withdraw your motion, yeah.
So I make a motion, withdraw my motion.
Okay, second.
And we need a second.
Second.
I'll second it.
And then we'd make a new motion to table, I guess.
Need a motion to table?
Because this is an action item, correct?
Yes, it's a review and approve.
So then we table for till the.
Can you motion to table to the next one?
I'm not sure we have to table. We have to vote for a table.
We haven't done it in the past.
No, I don't think we have to do that.
All right. Anything else then?
Nope.
Okay. Then we do not need to go with the closed session?
No.
Then all I need is any topics for our next month's meeting give to Jamie and myself. And I need a motion to adjourn.
Oh, my God.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foesed? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone.
That's a first.
I'm actually going to eat dinner tonight.
No, thank you. Thank you for coming.
Yes, eight o'clock.
They don't play that much.
Eight o'clock.
I think they do. Oh, they're out in California.
Yeah, they play at eight o'clock.
San Diego.
Oh, yeah, they're, they've been playing, wow. No, San Diego.
You a two-bath closet?
Yeah.
You, you getting, so kind of running, running to it a time?
Yeah. It was called the two-sol eleven.